All right, I'd like to call the zoning commission meeting to order for April 9th, 2008. Let the record show that all are present except for Paige Becknell. This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda, please come forward and you'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward. Public comment period is closed. Acceptance of the meeting minutes from March 12th.
Move?
Moved by Julio.
Second.
Second by Michael Marshon. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number five, public hearing to consider following rezoning request. Zoning ID 1859.08, lot C1D1, C1D2, A, C1D3A. And who's going to come present for this project?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Allison Keller and we have a new smokehouse. We're getting ready to expand. Our square footage there is already over. It was allowed by rural zoning. There was a variance grant. We would like to have the property rezoned to the crossroad commercial so that when we want to expand in the future, we wouldn't have to go through the variance again every time. All of the properties surrounding us is basically commercial on all the corners. There's several. There's a Chevron Station, the Sleep Clinic, the Post Office, Ronan's Boat Broker, GJ Sheet Metal, TMC Electrical, Ascension Paint and Body, Total Safety, Well-If They Care, Booths Paint, the Veterinarian Clinic, and it goes so on.
Lance, is this...what is the present zoning of this property? I've got commercial, present zoning commercial on this one.
No, so the present zoning is rural. Present uses on the property is a commercial on one of them. What she stated was the smokehouse. And then one's vacant and there's a house on the one on the corner.
Okay. Because I like saying on the sheet here, it's got present zoning commercial, which I didn't think was correct. So it's rural.
Mine says rural.
I don't know. I don't know. I think you are correct.
1859.08.
I reshuffle my deck, that's what. You are correct. As for the next one.
Okay, I'll remember that next one.
Hold that. Yes, sir.
Wrong.
Well, actually, it does say in the staff comments that it's from medium intensity residential to crossroads commercial. So you're saying it's rural?
Yes, sir. It's rural. Yes, sir.
It was medium density residential several years ago and the zoning commission dropped it down to rural. I have no idea why. I didn't even know it was done until I checked it on the map.
When was that done, Lance? Do you know?
Probably 2003, roughly.
I believe three corners of this intersection are in the city and our corner is the only corner that's only in the parish. Now, I'm not sure. Two of those corners are commercial. I'm not sure if the third one is or not.
You essentially have three parcels of land that form a U and then there's, you know, the inset of the U that's owned by a third party.
Yes. They were sent a letter for the zoning plan and as far as we know, they have no objection.
What's...it's a residence. What else? Is there anything else?
Does the house stand a trailer?
I did notice there's a little bridge that goes over a ditch between their property and the smokehouse.
The neighbor, actually, used to work at the smokehouse.
Okay.
She used to work with us.
Okay.
Okay. Questions from commissioners? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this property, please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
Yes.
No one? No. All right, this time, public hearing is closed. Comments, questions from commissioners?
There's an empty lot across the street from Highway 30. The owner is not listed on this plat...wait, might be on the other one. It's not on the one I'm looking at now. I'm sorry? Across Highway 30. It's just a big vacant.
Which lot?
Pacoong Grove.
The one that...
Is that all part of Pacoong Grove?
It's owned by three different corporations.
It's owned by Tricon Steamship Agency. They were mailed a letter.
But that property, I think, is some commercial too. That empty corner.
That's some commercial in the city, in the city of Dallas.
Yeah, right.
Okay, it is. Oh, okay.
And then you have the post office next to it.
What is directly behind you? You might have said, and I just missed it.
Directly behind?
And is it C1C?
That is, Mr. Tommy Kenny owns it. Total Safety is located on that property.
Total Safety?
Mm-hmm. They rent the building from Tommy Kenny.
And what's in the building? What do they do?
Industrial safety, breathing air trailers, monitors. They work there.
Okay.
It's commercial. And then behind that is a...is it a daycare or...
Well, it's country school. And then across the street from Total Safety is Ascension Body and Paint Shop.
Tip of the one lot. Tip of that lot right there.
We didn't clean up this quarter, did we, Lance?
There's some background on this whole property. It's kind of like Ms. Keller said. She didn't know what, you know, what happened in the area. At one time, we looked at doing some changes along Highway 30, probably around 2003. At that time, a lot of the residents came out at that time and they petitioned and they requested that this property be zoned to rural. And that's what changed from medium intensity residential at that time to this. So that's why it's rural at this time.
How could somebody request our property to be zoned?
Well, it was the whole properties. It was all. It wasn't just yours. It was everyone that was along Highway...everything from this area, from Highway 30 all the way down to, I don't know what's south of that, down South Hodges and Road all the way down. So it was done as a...
It was part of the plan, you know, and then it took the Marjorie, the parish. Everything was open for a reason.
It was done as a whole. It wasn't done just for one, this particular property. It was done as a parish as a whole. So it wasn't just this piece. It was from, you know, Prairieville to Santa Monica to everything. So it was done as a whole.
Are they...
City limits are the other three corners of city limits.
Okay.
Took in Pacoong Grove subdivision and I think city limits stops past Pacoong.
Alan, everything in the gray areas is the city limits. Okay.
Also, another business there is Harvey Tomplas Electrical Contractors.
TMC.
Yeah, they're recent.
Okay.
You know, hey Lance, we should probably look to include in this area. We left this one completely out. We didn't think to look at this area.
Okay. It's kind of a partial. It's not a full. I guess that's what, you know, I haven't seen partial property. Yep.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezon the property. I think it's consistent with the surrounding land uses and certainly does not appear to have any impact on adjoining residential areas.
Have a motion by Julio Dumas, second by Beverly Barre to approve rezoning. Any opposition?
I object.
Michael Marshon, nay. Anyone else? Motion carries. Please understand, this has to go to the council. It's not...we just make the recommendation for approval to the council and it'll...I'm sure you'll be advised when that will appear on their agenda. Okay. Okay? Zoning review, 1860.08, remainder of tract one for Wallace May.
I'm Wallace May and ask to request to rezon mine to commercial, please.
I guess this is the one, Lance. Our notes say it's...present zoning for the property is conservation? Okay.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So it's rezoned from conservation to crossroads commercial.
But this whole neighborhood, this whole area is all residential. There's a little house very, very close to your lot.
My sister's. Yes. It's my...all that back lane belongs to my girlfriend. Her name is Linda Diaz and I own a lot next to her and my other sister own a lot next to them.
And I'm sorry, which one's your lot?
Sir?
Which one is your lot?
I got tract A, right...yeah, tract one.
It's tract one?
Yeah.
It's on the corner, on the southeast corner?
Nine thirty-three and forty-two.
Exactly what is it that you're proposing to do with this property?
I'm planning on putting a grocery store there.
Putting a what?
A grocery store, you know, bait shop, gas station, stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
All the green?
Yes, sir. Everything in the green is conservation. If you go further south, that's where it makes this change at. It's from conservation to rural. And if you go west, the change of commercial is basically where First Colonial, I don't know if you know where that is, where Rosemont subdivision is. So it's...
That's a good ways.
Yes, a good ways. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and sign in. You'll have three minutes to talk. No one wishing to speak. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, let me ask you a question. Explain to me how you feel...how do you feel that this request is rezoning, how the proposed crossroad commercial is consistent with the character of the surrounding area?
First thing, I got a slow, a low-grade education. I don't quite understand exactly what you're asking. I think if you're asking why I want it commercial, because I raised up there and I done talked to a bunch of people and they said if I could put a grocery store there, it would help the community a whole lot.
Yeah, but the difficulty with that is, is that, you know, the whole idea, you know, of implementing a zoning process is to ensure that compatible things occur next to each other.
Yeah.
And that there are things that can coexist next to each other without having any potential problems. And that's why I was asking you how you think this can work because I got to be honest with you, taking a small tract of land with such short frontage on a state highway that's going to have access issues and trying to create a commercial parcel of it is very difficult to make it compatible. It's just not going to work very well and it generates a lot of compatibility problems with surrounding, especially in the conservation, you know, area. So I, you know... Spark. We're going to public hearing, right?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion. This has got to go to, obviously, to the parish council final decision, but I'm going to make a motion to recommend denial of the request of the rezoning on the basis that the request of rezoning would not be consistent or compatible with the surrounding land use and it would not further the purpose and intent of the Conservation Zoning District and the surrounding residential land uses.
Second.
Have a motion by Julio Dumas, second by Sherry Sloman to deny rezoning. Any opposition? Zoning review, ID 1861.08, eastern two tracts of Lot 1B for Dempsey-Pandarvis and AC Piku.
I thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. We're asking for rezoning of this property, which is on Post Office Road. Mr. Orth and I acquired this property in 1985 as a commercial site to put a concrete plant. Economics became the way they were in eighty-five. We declined to build that plant and retain the property. Everything basically around us to the west is commercial. There's a daycare center that joins us. Our property is kind of an elbow. I think it fronts like 140 on Post Office Road, goes back. We have two acres. Then we have a 40-foot servitude out 273 between Mr. Stanley Phillips's property and his sister's To the east of the daycare center is a loaned office, commercial office. To the east of that is a mechanic shop. Across the street from us is a fire and safety, a fire extinguisher business. Used to be a machine shop. Across the street to the west is a commercial park. Our only neighbor to the residential that's basically touching us is Mr. Bruce Orth's property to the west, which he has no objections. Matter of fact, he and Mr. Phillips and Mr. Phillips's sister is the only property left in there that would be medium intensity and they're making plans to approach this commission to have theirs rezoned also. We ask this commission to grant us this change based on the fact that it is compatible with the area. Nobody's going to build a house too much in the middle of a commercial operation and the property is basically too expensive to be commercial. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Comments and questions from commissioners?
Lance, is there any other zoning that could be allowed in this area besides mixed use to...
To allow that, the use that they want, I guess you could say? Is that what you're asking?
What do you want to put on it?
We have a contract to sell this property for a office warehouse operation, you know, office in the front and a small warehouse in the back, little commercial, basically similar to the across the street where the office buildings are. It just has a small storage area behind it, which is about as good a neighbor as you can get, way better than a concrete plant or a fabrication shop or something of that nature, yeah?
Yeah, and that's the problem. It's mixed use. Those would be allowed in mixed use. So is there anything else?
The concrete plant wouldn't. The only thing is the crossroad commercial, but there'd be limitations of square footage on the property. And I don't know if Mr. Dempsey would be, you know, if he would want that, I guess you could say, had that limitation of the square footage of the building on a two-acre tract, something that he would have to...
But they have put in a great big, nice...you mentioned it, the mortgage company or whatever that office building is. Plus, they've got all those condos across the street that have gone in. Those are nice little...I would hate to see something go in mixed use that would ruin that area or the tract from it.
We'll accept the change with the limitations of we wanting to build what we're trying to build and nothing that would be detrimental to the area.
Right. I know because what, I mean, once we say it's mixed use, you can sell it and somebody wants to do whatever they want. So that's...that's just my feeling.
What is allowed on mixed use?
Fabrication.
Fabrication.
What's the square foot limitations in crossroads?
10,000 square feet.
How big a facility do your buyer want to buy?
Be honest with you, I really don't know. We have two acres there. So how much can you build on two acres and have adequate amount of parking for the fire marshal in this, under the parish codes and that kind of stuff? Lance could more likely answer that better than...
I'd say roughly about 20,000.
We basically have 84,000 square feet of property there.
And unfortunately, I know there is a mechanic shop on the corner and again, mixed use would allow another type of that facility also if you should not develop it, if you should sell it. You know, someone could do something like that also.
Usually, price will dictate that. When zoning first came into, when it first was started, there was a lot of opposition by people that owned property in this parish that was against zoning, period, because it's price usually dictates what you can allow somewhere and what you can't allow there. You know, straight across the street from me is the condos, which they have nothing against the road as an interest in, but just to the right of that, to the west of that a little bit, is a fire extinguisher business. I forget the name of them, but they field fire extinguishers and that kind of stuff. Was a machine shop prior to that. Just to the right of me, to the west of me, you've got Pierce Foundry, which is a big time operation to the...I mean, that was to the east. I mean, to the west, I mean, you've got the concrete plant on the other side of the road. You know, so we're not in...we wouldn't be out of compliance with what's around us. You know, it's kind of mixed use now. If you look at it, there's some of one thing and there's some of the other.
Okay, this time, I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. Public hearing is closed. Staff, comments, questions? What is that little triangular piece of property?
That's Mr. Bruce Orth's property. Mr. Bruce Orth has no objection to what we're doing. Matter of fact, he was said that he would...he and Mr. Phillips and Mr. Phillips's sister is going to start the procedure of getting theirs rezoned also.
Is it a residence right now?
Yes, sir. The residence is basically a little old cow pasture. I don't think he has any cows anymore. It's a, you know, small fenced-in area. I'm saying Mr. Bruce Orth more likely has three acres there, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Lance, what he's wanting to do, would that fit in the SPUD ordinance?
Anything like that could be. I mean, yes, ma'am. I'm not going to lie to you. You know, it's under two acres, so it could be. I mean, anything under, I think, underneath two acres would could...I mean, I'm sorry, 20 acres, I'm sorry. Under 20, I'm sorry. Under 20 acres, I left off a zero, would be, could be considered as a SPUD. Yes, ma'am. So, to answer your question, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You know, Commissioner brings up a good point. I mean, I'm not going to lie to you. I think part of the problem is, is that, you know, we only have two options here. You know, put you in one zoning district, you have a limitation of square footage, which in another zoning district opens up the Pandora's Box to a lot of uses that wouldn't be compatible. And notwithstanding what you're saying about the market, you know, that we can't look at the market. We've got to be concerned with what the code could allow today and tomorrow. But I think under the SPUD ordinance, it would give us, it would give us the appropriate mechanism to approve what your client is desiring to do and, you know, with all the appropriate controls in place to ensure that it is, you know, what it is and still continue to protect, you know, the area and continue to kind of encourage the development in the way it's been over the last few years. So, I mean, we, you know, Lance, is it possible, can he defer Mendez's application and come back?
I'm sorry, O'Neil? I have to ask you that question. I know you're flipping through.
If that's what he desires.
Yeah, if that's what he would desire. I mean, and Dempsey, to tell you what a SPUD is, it's pretty much a conditional zoning. That's what it is. So what it is, is that it's basically, you know, these uses of this use that you state that would be there, that's what you would do, kind of like what you stated earlier, but that's what you would be allowed to do on the property. So there's limitations of what you state that you're going to do, it's you're going to do.
If I put deed restrictions on the property, it would be the same thing with it.
Yes, sir, but we wouldn't understand. Yes, sir, but we wouldn't do that. We couldn't enforce that.
The beauty about it is, is you can list all of the uses that you would allow there and leave out the uses that wouldn't be, that would be objectionable and, you know...
Basically, what we're talking about is another 60 days, 30 days for me to come back. I mean, it's, you know, time is an essence in anything and we have not one objection.
Yeah.
Not one. And the adjacent property owners was here. So... So if they don't care, why should this commission care? That's all, that's my thought on it.
Because there's a lot of people across the street in those condos in Seven Oaks, and there's a lot of people in the area who do care.
They're not here, they must not care a whole lot.
I care.
I would, I would just assume let the commission rule on it is now, and I'll take my chances with the, with the council.
I'll make a motion to deny. I don't believe it's in the best interest of this area.
I would ask...
A motion by Sherri Sloman to deny, seconded by Michael Marshon. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Michael's in favor. Beverly? To deny, yes.
Recommend.
Recommend denial.
Don objected.
Don objected. Only objection is Don. Motion to deny carries. Let me check out my notes here. Item number six, new business. Any new business to bring forth? Item number seven, old business. Any old business? Number eight, subcommittee report.
I gave my, my subcommittee report at the prior, prior discussion, but...
Wanna elaborate some more?
You know, essentially, we, we had some delays in getting the maps. We got the maps out of courtesy to Director, I thought that, you know, we should present it to him and go through them with him, and make sure he understood what, what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish, get his feedback on it. Also had some questions for Mr. Parington to make sure that we had the process in line of exactly how we had to go about that process, and what the steps were, make sure we followed them precisely, and... And that's basically it.
Thank you. I was just handed a, an amended agenda. What, this... I don't know, I don't know where it went, where, where we didn't get it, why we didn't get it, but, this was advertised Lance, this was the one that...
Yes, sir, yeah, that was out, yes, sir. That was also what was given out, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, what?
That was what was out front also, for everyone to pick up, so yes, sir, it was.
Okay, okay. Item number seven, under new business, if we may back up. The policy change for wastewater treatment plant. And is this...
This is the same thing that you discussed earlier in the Planning Commission. It dealt with subdivisions, but it did not deal, it did not dealt, deal with commercial. And so in the Development Code or in the zoning, we need to put that in there because of the commercial development.
So are we, in the zoning code, are we gonna try to propose an amendment, or we propose another policy?
It's gonna be a policy, just like, we're gonna keep it the same way that we do in the Planning Commission.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to put in a public hearing next month?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas, second by Michael Marshon, to have a public hearing for policy change on wastewater treatment plant. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. In addition to that, we have another item, which is pretty, just a housekeeping item, acceptance of the minutes of the January 9th Joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which were all on the, were they included in the...
Yes, sir.
It just needs, both bodies need to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Julio Dumas, second by Michael Marshon. Any opposition? Motion carries. Now, item number 10 is what this is now, so, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Michael Marshon makes a motion, and Julio seconds. Any opposition? We are adjourned.